All right, welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Given to you in accordance with the provisions of MGL, Chapter 38, Section 20, notices hereby given that the planning board will meet tonight on Monday, March 27, 2023, at 7:00 PM in Meeting Room 124, One Liberty Lane in Norfolk, Mass. Alternative public access has been made via Zoom, the online video conferencing platform, which allows users to view the meeting and provide comments during allotted windows. To join, please visit the town website. In order to access the meeting, the meeting will be recorded also for future broadcast by the Norfolk Community Television. And for more information on getting connected and using the video conference, please visit us at Norfolk.MA.us. Tonight, we have a public hearing to discuss proposed changes to the Norfolk zoning bylaws, which have been submitted to the warrant for the 5/17/2023 annual town meeting. All votes will be taken by roll call vote, and we will begin with attendance. Roll call vote will begin with Mr. Gary Sullivan, who's joining us via Zoom.
Here.
Mr. Eric Diamond, the clerk.
Here.
Mr. John Weddleton.
Here.
And our associate, Melissa Mayo.
Here.
And I, Chris Mottford, the vice chair. Our chair is unable to join us this evening, so I will be facilitating these services. Thank you. So, we want to go ahead straight into the 7 o'clock public hearing? All right, Eric.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter 48 of MGL, the Norfolk Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 27, 2023, at 7:00 PM at the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, to discuss proposed changes to the Norfolk zoning bylaws, which have been submitted to the warrant for the 5/17 annual town meeting. Complete copies of the text of the amendments are available for review at the town of Norfolk website or in the planning board office during the hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Thursday.
Do you want us to read the articles as follows?
You can waive the reading if you want, or you can read them.
Motion to waive the reading of the article.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
So moved. Or do I have to do that by roll call?
Uh, yes.
Roll call, yes, please.
All right, Gary. We have a motion to waive the reading of the articles.
So moved.
We're looking for an "I" or an "A".
Oh, "I", sorry.
All right, no problem. Mr. Diamond.
Hi.
Mr. Weddleton.
Hi.
Chair votes "I". Ms. Mayo.
I would vote "I" as well.
Thank you. All right, so that's been waived, so we're going to go into the discussion portion.
Tackle the sign regulations first?
Sure.
All right, excellent. So the sign regulations, changes, for those that want to follow along, once it's on the warrant, is what, Article?
Um, it is Article 26, maybe?
26?
Hold on, I can pull up the warrant.
Should I answer before we start?
Yeah, I'm sorry, hold on one second.
Sign Regulation, Article 4.
Uh, no, I was looking for the placement on the warrant.
The town meeting warrant.
25.
25.
25, excellent. So now we'll go back to the, as you know, Gary Sullivan, Melissa, Associate Member Melissa Mayo, has been working as a subcommittee kind of role with the signed bylaw, met with the Norfolk Small Business Association on several different occasions. We did get the opportunity to meet with the advisory board in the beginning of March to go over the signed bylaw changes. You looked at the signed bylaws changes in the beginning of March, your March meeting. One thing we'll get to was that you did want to make a change to the bylaw in terms of the projected signs, you wanted to make it C1 through C6. If you recall, we'll get to that in a second, but that was one of the things that I just want to call your attention.
Because it was previously printed or published that way?
It was, when we, as this gone through multiple drafts, we had listed out all the districts, but the thought was to just make it C-1 through 6, because there's a couple other commercial districts, so it'll be more inclusive to the commercial districts. But the highlights of the changes are, one, is to allow for internal illumination through the planning board by special permit. As I just mentioned to you, it'd be allowed by special permit from the planning board in the B1, inner and outer zone, commercial district. The C1 through C6, commercial district, that's why you entertain that motion to make that change. In addition to that, we had a slide, some existing provisions in terms of the existing sign regulations and renumbering them. One that you'll see in Section 2 of the code was, it's deleting, but it's really deleting it and moving it down, so it's going to just move down under 4. That was one of the changes, and it's word for word, just slides down 1. Everything else gets renumbered, and then the, on what is now number 12, which was previously number 11, we just clarified that the allowance for larger freestanding sign is a special permit through the planning board, it was silent before. We had a lot of good discussion on projecting, so we did make an amendment to what is now 14, what we're calling protruding, because we do add projecting signs now, which is not something that previously was in the zoning bylaw, projecting sign literally comes out from the building, and it's to be hung to the building, so we just cleaned that up, so there wouldn't be any confusion there. So those are new words, we're deleting projecting, put it protruding. 19, again, we just clarified the planning board is a special permitting authority, it was just an SPGA. Another large addition to the sign bylaw is sandwich board signs, which was one of the signs that, through the discussions with the Norfolk Small Business Association and other businesses, that the sandwich board would be a sign that could help businesses in terms of advertising their businesses. Those sandwich board signs, they're not special permit, but there are specifications in terms of size, shape, location, so forth, so that's a new addition to the bylaw. If you recall, the approach with this is to make, in the big picture, probably significant sign changes, but take it incrementally, so we're stepping, we're moving forward. There was discussion about, you know, getting to that next level where everything is just prescriptive, and you just go through a checklist, but like anything, you need to kind of walk before you, I mean crawl before you walk, and walk before you run. So, this is the approach that we're just being proposed. Over time, if it gets to that point where everyone's comfortable in terms of, you know, having that prescriptive standard, that's fine, but considering, I think this is, I would say, significant change to the sign bylaw for Norfolk, it is, right? You want to get it right, and you want to have that oversight from the beginning, because when something goes wrong, we all know about it, and we'll hear about it multiple times, so we really want to try to be cautious, right?
Hundred percent.
To do that in that way, so that's what's before you. My understanding, at least, I think, Melissa, you had another chance to meet with the business association between the last planning board meeting and this one, I think, right? Is that true, or not?
I have met with some of the business owners individually.
Okay.
But I was not able to make it to that meeting.
Oh, no.
Yep, but I did meet with them. Yes, yep, a couple.
So my understanding is they're comfortable with these, this is a good step forward, and they're comfortable with what's being proposed. It's, there might be some other things we could do, but at least now it's a big step forward, so.
Yep, I agree.
That's it for my intro in terms of the...
I appreciate it, very well done, thank you. Open to comments from the board. I know we've discussed this at length already, previous to this. Is there anything outstanding, additional comments, changes that we need to make as it's printed, turns?
Not as it's printed necessarily, but before we go in front of advisory for sign-off, we did have a request from someone on the advisory board to define what is moving, what is blinking, flashing, you know, so I just looked up those actual definitions to make sure that they're comfortable with what we have in the warrant, and I have that for our meeting already, but that was their only real, I think, outstanding concern that they asked us to follow up on.
Got it, understood. Looking here, where do we have that detailed?
I think that was already in the bylaws, wasn't it?
New number 4, yeah. So no sign using flashing or intermittent lights, except such portions of a sign as consists solely of indicators of time and/or temperature, no moving or animated signs, no reflectorized signs, no signs painted directly on any building surface, so on and so forth. What would be, so the definition that you have?
Let's, let me open it up real quick. So flashing would be shining in a bright but brief, sudden or intermittent way, and then intermittent would be occurring at irregular intervals, not continuous or steady. Moving signs, that was one that was actually tough to pin down, I found a definition on a law firm's website, it apparently deals with this, and the, their definition, they say that it means any sign which revolves, rotates, or has any moving parts physically, or in which an illuminated component alternates with another to create the illusion of movement. So it sounds more like a 3D.
Like a physical movement.
Partially, yeah, and then the other would be the, kind of the illusion of that.
Okay, and then animated signs, I would assume that would be like a, perhaps like...
Yeah, just two alternating images, make it look like it's moving.
Right, or, you know, somebody walking into view, like putting something on display and then walking off, or something like that, where it's a legit animation. Thoughts, feelings?
The lack of animation really limits our small businesses' ability to create animated mascots, but other than that, I think those definitions are pretty good.
Yeah, and we'll give those back to advisory when we go there again, and I have them documented for them. I think there's, really, because we will have a special permit process, and we'll also have a guideline document to go with it with imagery, with, you know, text to describe this is what we mean exactly when we say X, Y, and Z, I think the risk is really low. Hopefully, the folks in town think the same.
Yeah, my only concern's going to be around the animated signs, particularly, I can see Dunkin' Donuts, I've seen in other locations where they have, you know, roasted beans falling on the floor or something like that, or like a cup of coffee.
On the sign.
Right, like if you're inside the store and they have one of the menu board signs.
Hmm.
So how would we treat those types of situations?
Well, if it's, I don't know, Rich, if it's inside the store and not facing outside the store, isn't that a separate type of sign?
It's viewable from the outside? Depends where you're, I was going to take a different direction, actually, with it, so technically, that's a good way to define it, but we don't define it, define it within our zoning bylaw, so it's open to interpretation from the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay.
So, I guess I would...
So by having this in our back pocket, from a definition perspective?
I think it's a way to, as Bob would, or any other zoning enforcement officer, since we don't define it per se, they would use the, you know, what you probably looked up to say, is this animated or moving?
Hmm.
Because to Gary's point, I think if, you know, I mean, great example, as we know that very likely will come forward, which would be the menu board.
Right.
It's, you know, it's at a drive-through, the two that we have right now, Dunkin' Donuts, okay, those are great examples, right? There could be things that are moving on it.
Right.
But is it impactful, is it in the, maybe the old, I say old, that's a bad word, but the early generation of signs in terms of animation, that I think it's, I think we need some little breadth, some room, to be able to, for you as a board, that you could then, within the special permit, have some specifications, how the signs will operate. So for example, you know...
I mean, the last thing that I want to deal with is having to make a special allowance through the special permit process every time someone comes to us for a menu board.
No, but you may specify things if it becomes, depends on location, for example, you know, you may want to limit it, but I don't think you want to, I don't think the goal is to strictly interpret to not allow any animation, like I think there's some room, that's how I would view this, that, you know, like changeable copies, somebody might say that's movement, you know, like somebody might really have an issue with changeable copy, I certainly think changeable copy, is that moving or not moving, you know what I mean, you're really, are you, how far do you want to go to?
Well, there's no concern, it's a special permit process.
Right.
Special permit processes are generally written for this sake.
Exactly.
We interpret and make a decision.
Yeah.
So that shouldn't be a problem, we may find some with movement that are very tasteful.
Exactly.
So...
I guess I would be concerned, I heard advisory's comments on those two points, but they went a little deep on some of their comments in terms of like a light flickering is, you know, the light bulb itself, I think you have to take size in its totality, right?
Yeah.
So, is it moving, is it, you know?
In the location of it.
If you were to get down, yeah, if you were going to get down to the diode level, say it's flickering and it's moving, that's a little...
A little much, yeah.
That's a little bit on the extreme of how to interpret, so I guess that's my point.
And so when I was doing the research with the Small Business Association, I was thinking more exterior signs, too, so are you concerned about the inside of a building?
Well, like menu boards on the outside.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so on the outside, we, yeah, we did talk about that a lot, and there was a concern from advisory that we would have, quote, dancing donuts, and they were not happy with that. I misunderstood, I thought you were asking, I thought you were saying, we might start seeing menu boards from inside restaurants coming to us.
Well, for some restaurants, you can see them from the street level. I wouldn't put it past some of our vendors to put an LCD display in their window advertising something like lottery, or something to that effect.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so there is a possibility for animated signs to be presented and come to us for special permit.
Yep.
So, are we shooting ourselves in the foot by saying no to animated signs, or is it good and we can interpret this moving forward based on what we deem appropriate? And from what I'm hearing, it's the latter.
Yes.
Exactly.
I'd say so.
Yeah, so I'm fine moving forward with that. Is there any further comment from the board? No, Gary, no. All right, looking to take comment from the public, Mr. Preppis has a hand up.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
So I'm one of the owners for the Dunkin', actually both of them in town, so there's very little animation on the outdoor menu boards. Literally, the only animation someone would see would be, you know, after 11 o'clock, when we, when, since we're a combo location, it switches over to the Baskin Robbins, you like, the bottom right part of the digital board would show, you know, ice cream flavors or an ice cream flavor of the month. In regards to anything before that, it's basically just a menu board with all of our pricing, and it just basically reconfirms the order after the customer places it, I mean, that's all there is, there's no dancing donuts or coffee bean spilling. Inside on the internal digital boards that we have, I mean, yeah, you do see one of our advertising boards, but, yeah, nothing outside would be, you know, animated to a point where it would cause, you know, anyone to, you know, fly off the road or anything like that. I mean, the menu board's, you know, obviously, we're looking to put it in the same location we have our existing menu board, and it's actually smaller, so I hope that answers some of the questions.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yep.
Any additional comments? I think that's it, right?
Yeah, that's it.
All right, awesome. So, Rich, we need a separate motion for this, right, to recommend to the select board?
Uh, yeah, you would, you want to, I know there's people in the audience, but I know they're probably not here for the signage part.
Anyone here for the signage board?
I don't think you want to.
All right.
So, so the first step would be to close the public hearing.
All right, motion to close.
Do we want to, are we ready to, do we, are we...
Well, we wouldn't be able to close the entire...
We don't want to close the hearing yet, because we still have it open for the table of use.
Right.
It's all one whopper hearing, it's not broken?
It's all one whopper hearing.
All right, forget what I just said, that's, all right, so you're not going to...
So wait for everyone to end.
Yeah, wait to close it all out at the end.
All right, awesome, so we're moving on to the table for allowable uses, and that is Article 26 now.
Yes, so when we get back, remember, I want to entertain a motion to change the C1-D6.
Sounds good.
All right, all right, we'll get to the use, so what we, what I have, if you had a chance to take a look at it on the shared drive, was the final use table, which will be Articles 26, 27, and 28. Town Council had recommended, which I also have on the shared drive, is, which you'll see in there, is an exhibit, so the tables themselves will be an exhibit to the warrant, so the text will be in the warrant, but the table that you see there before you will actually be an exhibit, so there's two documents, there's the main body of the warrant with the text of the changes, and then the exhibit, which will show the use table, so I have, both of those are in here, in terms of what's before you. So essentially, 26 is going to take the uses that are prescribed in the B1, the C1, C4, C6, and bring them into the existing Schedule of Use Table Attachment 1, which is Article 26, and as part of Article 26, there's a little bit of, there are some subparts which were added as Roman numerals, remember, you originally had Part 1, Part 2, and so forth.
Right.
So the, so Town Council changed that to just list them out as Part 1, Part 2, Part 3, and so forth. Those changes would, number 1, get rid of the references, well, we'll insert the reference back to Attachment 1 for the B1 District, C1, C4, C6, as well as delete in the other subsections where it had the superseding language, so that gets removed and refers back to Attachment 1, that's all part of Article 26, as well as, there's a provision in each subarticle that says if a use is not prescribed, as listed, is deemed prohibited, that's going to be addressed in the table, but even as a belt and suspenders, we already have within the existing Section 4, Article 4 of the bylaw, where it says the same thing, so it's kind of redundant, but anyway, it's going to be in the table. So everything comes together in Article 26. Article 27 goes in and changes the header for 1, so we'll get rid of the asterisks, because the asterisk refers to Article 9, and then there's an asterisk for Article 10, which is the C1, and so forth to the C4 and C6, if you see there, what's on the screen. And it also makes adjustment to the header, which I had a memo in the, I had an outline of comments that Bob went through and reviewed it.
We have, yeah.
Okay, we got a little bit overzealous, because we end up deleting the B4 district, which we actually have one, so.
Right.
What I did include for you tonight, which is the final articles, is already made the adjustment, so C, so C, excuse me, B4 stays, similarly with C5, we still have C5, so it eliminates C2, but we have C3/C5.
So those will be amendments that we have to make?
Those will be amendments you'll have to make, but I just want you to know it's already embedded within there, as we go through it. Same thing, if you want to go down to, scroll through it, the big piece of Article 27 is where we start to eliminate duplicate uses being described, to consolidate them down and merge them in, so for example, I think, actually, on page, just to get a flavor for it.
So 27's the redundancy check.
Yeah, that's the redundancy check and the elimination. Again, that's going to be, so there'll be Exhibit 27, similarly, that you'll see all that work there, as we talked about before, but since we're at the public hearing, we are going to have what I call the handouts, since we got exhibits, we got exhibits and handouts, the handouts will be that roadmap for residents and officials to see, okay, when that got stricken here, what happened to it, and there's an explanation, say, okay, it either moved, or it got merged into one, so there's kind of, I call it the roadmap, so to speak, what's going on, and that was a comment that was raised at the advisory board, how do we know what's going on? For example, I know the one that kind of threw them up was the solar, so for example, you know, the solar got moved, it's transportation utility uses, so it got moved. And this will be a separate article to be voted on, and everything is combined into one to clean it up, so to speak.
Okay.
And reduce it down, and then the next article, which is Article 28, puts in "no" and fills out the cells, so where the cells are blank, there'll be "no's" in there, and then where the cell has an SP for special permit, we'll be inserting ZB for zoning Board of Appeals. One of the comments that Bob made, which is a very good comment, for sure, is that, well, what does SPZB mean, and what is SPPB? You all know that, you deal with it all the time, but from a layperson, so what I did put in there for Article 28 is in the bottom of the table, when everything gets cleaned up, it'll say SPPB, Special Permit Planning Board, and SPZB, Special Permit is Only Board of Appeals, so it's clear for the reader as we go forward with everything voted. We have this, which ends up, what you all wanted to have as a board, that combine what it looks like this all gets done, it will be in Exhibit 28, so I filled it all out, put the "no's" in where the blanks were, and then put in, you know, specified ZB with the SP, so that would be the finished product. The language was changed, originally had non-substantive changes, if you remember.
Right.
Town Council was more concerned when it went to the AG than town meeting, like, well, that's not, you know, instead of getting into the... Like, well, that's not, you know, instead of getting into the discussion, is that non-substantive or substantive changes? That's, just strip it out. So it's gone, just a zoning amendment change.
Got it.
And then Exhibit 28 will have the completed table. So you'll see, originally we had it, we didn't have it all filled out. We were going to show it as a handout, but now it's going to be exhibit. So we might not need a handout, actually, if it's already in exhibit. So we'll talk about that, but that's the handout piece of Town Meeting?
You know, I was going to ask you about that because the handout, typically it's not very lengthy. You know, like, this is a lot of detail.
Yes.
Um, and especially that document you put together, that's great. That has the explanation why it moved, where it went, all of that. Um, do you think there would be, is there, are we able to maybe put the exhibits or handouts on the website ahead of time? So people can print it if they want, look through it ahead of time?
So we're already ahead of you.
You are. I love it.
So that's going to happen. How's that? But you had a great idea, but we're already thinking the same page. So that's going to be on the website.
Awesome.
We didn't put it up there yet because we needed to vote. But now, once we, hopefully this all, you'll bless this whole thing tonight, and then we'll send it over and then we'll put it up on the website.
Great.
So it'll be up there. Um, yeah, so, yes, great idea.
Thank you.
Awesome. Um, so before we start entertaining comments from the board, um, Bob Bullock has provided us some comment ahead of our vote as he was unable to join our meeting tonight. Um, has everyone had a chance to review those comments? If not, can we perchance get that up on the screen?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Want to just recap it or?
Yeah, do you want to do that? Or do you want me to?
I think, I would ask you to, because if you can recap it, that's good. That'd be better.
Sure.
Because then it means you understand it, so that's, right?
So the first one, uh, Bob's recommending a footnote for Schedule of Use Attachment 1 that lets everybody know what SPBB and SPZBA means. Um, so his amendment would be as follows. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw Section 310 dash 4.2, Schedule of Use Regulations Attachment 1, where there's a blank cell, insert no. And where the cell has an SP, change it to SPZB at the bottom of Attachment 1. Insert SPB, SPPB, Special Permit Planning Board, and SPZB, Special Permit Zoning Board of Appeals. All is set forth in the document entitled Norfolk 2023 ATM Article 28 Exhibit. A copy is on file at the Town Clerk's Office or take any action, uh, in relation there too. Um, so this one, I think, is, uh, nice to have. It's easy enough for us to recommend this at Town Meeting if we feel the need or to explain what those mean. Um.
I should have added this in earlier, so I didn't mean to interrupt, but because of where we are in the process, in terms of, we're quite a bit ahead of Town Meeting. If you vote this, this will go in, this will go in. So actually, by the time it gets to the, the residents and the warrant, it'll all be done. So they won't even see the, so to speak, the.
Okay.
I think this does make sense for people that don't spend, you know, a lot of time in the bylaws or, you know, don't really understand the process because we have a lot of them. I think that does make it slightly simpler for them to know where to go.
Makes sense. Eric, any comment?
I agree.
John, you want to act on this tonight or?
Yeah, definitely.
Gary, same feeling?
Yeah, I, I would question people don't love bylaws, though. I think they really like to get down.
Absolutely. All right, so we will make a motion on one tonight with an amendment. Um, number two is the B4 district was inadvertently deleted. Rich already alluded to this. It needs to remain because obviously we have a B4 district, but we don't have a B2, so that can be just deleted. Um, C5 district was inadvertently deleted. It also needs to remain because we do have a C5, but we don't have a C2, so that can be deleted. Um, so the issue there was just copy paste between versions of these documents that we've been working on leading up to this moment. Um, I, this needs to happen tonight, so I think we need to, uh, make that change. Um, everybody agree?
Should the B4 be bolded if that's going to stay?
Yeah, I mean, from a bold, un-bold perspective, um.
He's bolding the change.
Yeah, we'll be bolding the change appropriately.
So the B4 is there already?
And the existing table of allowable uses. So we would be removing the B2 from that.
Right.
Table.
So B3 slides up, then you have this, the, uh, slash, sorry, um, and then B4.
Same with C2.
Yeah, same.
All right, so the zoning amendment would read as follows. It's at one, to see if the town will vote to amend the district headings in Norfolk. A Norfolk zoning bylaw, Section 310, 4 dash 2, 4 dot 2, Schedule of Use Regulations Attachment 1, by deleting the strike through language and adding new language in bold print as shown on there for Article 27. I think that's fine. Uh, number three was adult daycare and adult daycare ancillary to an assisted living facility should be deleted from residential uses, subcategory, and placed in commercial uses. Again, it sounds like we.
It's already in there. It's just that, just to delete it from here because it's in commercial, so.
Right. That makes sense to me as printed. So Section 4, to see if the town will vote to amend residential uses, Section, uh, Norfolk zoning bylaw, Section 310, 4 dash, dash 4.2, Schedule of Use Regulations Attachment 1, by deleting the strike through language and adding the new language in bold print. Okay? And then four is the use of trailers, buses, mobile homes for residents in excess of 30 days should be deleted because it is covered in the use of trailers, buses, and mobile home dwellings. So there was another copy pasta issue there. I'm good with that. Moving forward with that as, uh, proposed. Any comment there?
No.
All right. Section number five, takeout restaurant by special permit in the C1 district as it was inadvertently deleted, um, which means that it would be prohibited. So we don't want to do that.
Yeah, so this is more of a choice one in this one because.
Wanted allowed by right.
Yeah, so there was a next level to that was allowed by right. So at least, if you're not comfortable going that far, hopefully you are. But if you're not, at least remove the strike through, so at least it's still allowed as opposed to, by the way it's currently written, it wouldn't even be allowed at all.
Yeah, so i- it is a change. It's going from special permit to allowed by right.
Correct.
So that one, I think, deserves a little bit of, uh, conversation. How do we feel by, uh, making that change to the allowable use table for that section? This is for C1 district. Any concerns? Gary, anything on your side?
No, this looks good.
Okay. John, any concerns?
No, it's necessary for a restaurant in today's day and age, especially.
Yeah. Eric?
No.
Melissa, anything?
Um, I'm trying to understand this one a little better. John, it sounds like you have a good understanding of this. When you say it's necessary for restaurants, maybe I'm.
All restaurants offer takeout because, well, during COVID, it became the main operation of a restaurant. But do you know of any restaurants that don't have takeout?
Oh, got it. Never mind. I was up above that one.
I doubt you.
I was trying to understand why we'd need trailers in the C1.
Uh, we're at the Town.
It's like I'm.
And so it, it's allowed by special permit at this point.
Oh, got it.
And so that would end up going SPPB, right? Or SPZB?
It would have been SPZB.
That would go SPZB, but really, the C1 district's meant for that.
Right, no, that totally makes sense.
By right. All right.
Thank you.
No problem. And then the last one was Bob's recommendation to retain wellness, dance, exercise, and aerobic studios, martial arts studios, and delete exercise and aerobic studios. Um, so essentially allowing more uses into the, the table to be. It, it makes it more descriptive, easier to understand. Um, I'm fine with that. Any conversation from the board on those?
Nope.
Nope? Okay. Now, before I open up for public comment on these articles.
Yeah.
And then takeout restaurants here.
Are we finding more issues?
Yeah, so if you just, if you're.
What are you doing?
What page are you on?
26?
I am on page seven of the, um, where it says restaurants, comma, takeout.
So that's still 26. That's still the combination of all those. So we're going to have duplicates there.
Go to 27. You gotta go to 27.
27, sorry.
That's what we start.
No worries, no worries.
That's the cleanup.
So if we go to 27.
You see something in 27?
Okay, okay.
Yeah. Should be cleaned up in 28. See.
Commercial, okay. I'm getting it.
Fast food restaurants. Is all that remains, I think.
Okay.
So we should have, uh, restaurant. The end, we should, we should end up with restaurant. And we should end up with.
Yep, you're right. Okay, and then takeout restaurants.
Takeout restaurants, and then fast food restaurants. Yeah, so.
All right, so are we good? We're covered?
Yep.
Thank you.
Good to check on it.
All right, so reiterating, Article 26 is the combination. Article 27 is the deduplication. And Article 28 fills in all the blanks with nos and modifies the SPs with SPPB or SPZB. Okay. Any additional conversation from the board on these three articles at this time? Want to ask everybody?
A question on, uh, table on page 12 on the top half. There's public and semi-use, semi-public use. There's a couple of lines about schools and nurseries. And, uh, rows to be deleted. But the elements to the right in each zone look like they also should be crossed off, right?
The three nos?
Yes. Why aren't those?
Oh, yeah, I see what you mean.
Well, because they should be coming down to the consolidated line.
Right, but when we delete the row, we're deleting all the elements to the right.
Okay. I think, Eric, if we look at the, let me see.
Regardless, we need to make that change for the warrant.
Yeah, no, I think it, I think it's been picked up in the exhibit, though, your comment. So let me just look and see. You want to, if you just want to pull up the exhibit article, that would be, uh.
So that's Article 27, public and semi-public.
Yeah, let's see.
I don't see it on the, on here, no.
27, it's still not there.
And that brings me to page 10 of the document.
Page 10. Yep, okay, so I will add, we'll add the strike through on those.
I see it. Same thing on page 13, telecommunications consisting of wireless. The second full row, in the last column.
Last SP.
Okay. All right.
I hope you're crafting a really good amendment over there, Rich.
On telecommunication.
Um, yep, right, so that, right there should be a strike through.
Please bear with us.
Yeah, we're going to have to go a little slow through this amendment vote, but just so we make sure we got it covered.
Under commercial uses here, we have the same thing.
What page?
We have 17. It looks like we cross off three of the nos, but not the other three.
Uh-huh. Which one is that?
Adult business.
Oh, yep.
Didn't see that one on 13, though.
Um, on page 13, right.
Exhibit's probably.
The top one?
New pages, maybe.
Hopefully, when you guys delete the whole, uh, area, you'll make sure nothing's to the right of it in the boxes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we'll just.
She's on page 13. It's okay. Now, SP. So that's that one. Okay.
Don't see anything else.
Let me see.
Waiting on you, Eric, though.
No.
Got better eyes.
Different pages on the exhibits, that's why I didn't see it.
Missed it here, but this is Bob's thing.
That's Bob's.
That we, already, we're catching this. We're deleting that row.
Yeah. Are you good now?
Yep.
Okay. Any further comment on Article 26, 27, 28 from the board? Gary, you good?
I'm good.
Eric, you're all set?
Yep.
John?
Yep.
I am good. Melissa, any other comments?
Nope, I'm good.
All right, opening the comments period to the public. John, you got your hand up?
Just more of a question for Rich. I don't, I don't see this on the, on the docket for the May meeting, so maybe I had to formally fill something out or maybe just didn't, um, fell through the cracks. Underground parking, uh, for the B1 district, is that something that's going to be potential in the future? Or is that potential now with special permit through zoning? Or what, I guess, where do we stand with that topic?
Let me speak to Bob. My memory on that topic was that it wasn't, didn't need to be listed as it wasn't prohibited. You could just, let me check and ask him about it.
Okay.
Didn't think he.
We always assume going through all the zoning way back then that it's no different than a walkout basement. You're not doing any extra structure and, you know, it just opens up more car, uh, parking spots, so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if he formalized that, but maybe just by right where it's a walkout, you can do that. You're just paving the walkout area, that's all.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll circle back with Bob, let you know, John. But I don't think, I don't think it needed specifically be addressed as you were talking about.
It's like a two-car garage under there.
Yeah.
Right, right, okay. All right, that's all I got. Thank you.
No problem. Any other, uh, public comments regarding Article 26, 27, 28? Any comments from the parties inside the building? No? All right, so Rich, we've got a doozy ahead of us. How do you want us to, uh, do this?
Can we, can we vote all the articles as one?
Yes.
Close the hearing and vote all three? And incorporate Bob's changes as part of the, uh, the motion?
Yes, as well as the ones that Eric just.
Right.
Had listed, because I just actually mean that Eric's edits in the exhibits to those articles.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote. Gary Sullivan?
Aye.
Eric Diamond?
Aye.
John Waddleton?
Aye.
Chris Monfort, Vice Chair, votes aye unanimously. Uh, Melissa?
I would vote aye as well.
Thank you. All right, so our next step would be, I would like a motion to recommend the proposed changes to the Norfolk zoning bylaws with Mr. Bullock's comments and the proposed changes that we surfaced through Eric's commentary.
And?
And.
C1 through C6.
The change for the C1 through C6 districts for the signage, Article 24, change as well.
Which is Section 310 dash.
Section 310.
6.9.
Section 6, wait, 3, which, 6.9?
310 dash 6.92.
2.
And 3. Those you also want to include projecting. Those who also want to include projecting signs to match the same.
Right, okay. So looking for a motion to recommend to this select board the changes to the Norfolk zoning bylaws, which have been submitted to the warrant for the 5/7/2017, 2023 annual town meeting, to include Mr. Bullock's comments and Eric Diamond's findings, as well as propose a change to the districts for the signage. Amendment Article 24 to include C1 through C6.
This is friendly amendments 25.
Friendly amendment, 25.
On the side, that's all.
Thank you. Motion again?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All right, so roll call vote, Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Diamond?
Aye.
Mr. Waddleton?
Aye.
Vice chair votes aye. Ms. Mayo?
I would vote aye as well.
Awesome. So we are good with that public hearing, we're all set now.
Excellent.
We are.
Thank you. Record time.
Well, sort of. I told these gentlemen I told. We beat, we beat Betsy's estimate, though, so that's good.
All right, I got something going for me.
I said eight.
I know, I know, I know.
You were right on.
Well, they didn't, they wanted to be here anyway, see it, so.
All righty, so moving along to new business, we've got 17 Shire Drive on the agenda.
Okay.
It was formerly 5 Phillips Way. Um, there's a status update and a possible vote to recommend temporary occupancy. Do we want to do these separately, or do we want to talk to them together?
No, separately.
Okay. So let's deal with 17 first. Um, there's a report from Beta dated March 27, 2023, with regards to as-built plans, field observations, and a couple of photographs. So Rich, you want to take us through this?
Yeah, sure, you have a choice, you either.
And when you come up, please state your name and. Property.
John Pantonio, I'm the owner of the building.
Thank you.
All right. So the reason why Mr. Pantonio is before you is to seek a temporary occupancy permit for 17 Shire, which formerly. 5 Phillips Way. Beta went, had prepared a punch list, which included a site visit this past Friday. They're. Originally. How much detail you want? So they're here, originally generated from an enforcement order, so that's. Why it, how it. How it got to tonight's meeting, as opposed to the next April meeting. So they were. Progressing on the completion of the project, but in order to be able to. They know there's outstanding work to be done, but in order, from the process through the zoning bylaw, they have to seek a temporary through the planning board, who would then in turn make a recommendation to Bob's office in order to issue a. A full occupancy, oh, excuse me, a temporary occupancy permit. So this, this, as we speak to in terms of the occupancy permit, is related to the site aspect of the project, not the building itself. As I understand, there'll probably be inspection tomorrow on the building for this particular property. There's, um, there is work to be completed. And speak with Mr. Pantonio today. I think the thought was that June 1st would be a reasonable timeframe to complete the work that's needed. So if the board were to entertain a temporary occupancy permit, it needs to be date. And then follow up from there in terms of completing the, the site work. I don't think there's not, I mean, there's. There's landscaping done, some striping, some curving needs to be put in, but to, and then paving the top coat there, but. I didn't see from the list, even from the site inspection, that there's.
What is that F1 and F2?
F1 and F2.
Handicap ramp and spaces relocated?
Yes. So the, um. It might be.
I don't have a picture of that, so.
It's up on the.
They, they go up the crosswalk and go up the ramp that way to the front entrance. And so this is the crosswalk.
Yeah, one of the, on the planning window.
I'm going to take the mic, if you go to the screen, is that all right?
That'd be great, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
I can zoom in a little bit.
So originally, the handicapped spots were in the.
Correct.
In the front, over in this location. But in order to meet the ADA and the slope requirements and so forth, so they had to be relocated to here to come across with the sidewalk to get over to the handicap spots. In terms of that relocation. I did, it was quite, it was quite some time ago, but I did review it with, with Chad, and actually, I think Chris as well, just in terms of making the field adjustment.
Yeah.
To that.
So based on the pictures, it looks like the majority of the painting is already completed. It's noted here that there's only 16 out of 18 parking spaces painted. What was the thought process behind that? Is there two additional spots in this non-paved area?
Well, he's going to have to put the top coat down.
Soon as we do the top coat, we're going to, we're going to reline it anyways.
Got it. And then it doesn't look to me, based on what I'm seeing here, that there's anything from a life safety perspective that draws concern, is that fair?
That's fair.
Any questions from anyone on the board?
Did we get a estimate on the dollar amount of the work to be completed?
I did not.
We should probably bond this to. Let's see, $25,000 worth of work left?
That seems fair, and I have.
I'm just throwing a number, I'm asking, I'm.
I, I also have a pre-approval letter for a bond, so if you want to set a, set a price.
Jeez, how many trees you putting in?
Uh, I, I haven't looked at the plan in, in a little bit, but, but it's spelled out on the plan.
Because I know that.
I think it's four.
Four? Because I know that the, the DPW charge is about $500 per tree. So that'd be a couple of thousand. How much paving you got?
Uh, probably about 15 grand. To put the top coat on. And I'm doing the granite myself, which is sitting on site already.
Is it straight-up granite or sloped?
Both, there's some sloped and some straight-up still left to be done.
Is this going to be used just for you, or you're going to rent it?
I, I'm not sure yet. When I get to the finish line, I'll try to figure something out.
Where's the, where's the sloped granite going?
It's just, it's just extending what's up there already, the existing sloped granite.
So it's, it's going to come across the front, and it's going to be this little section right here.
Is this an older approved plan, Rich?
It was originally, sloped granite is horrific.
It's horrible.
It's destroyed in.
Yeah, right.
Two years.
Trucks.
If I had it my way, I would have you put a monolithic berm down with the finished pavement coat, and those don't dig up, and that's going to look like a mess into you, is that in my subdivision? The plows, even on straightaways, they ruin it.
I mean, you can see it just in the picture.
They just ruin it.
And trucks, and trucks pull around that circle when no one's there, and they back all over it.
Anymore in this town, because it just is, it's destroyed.
Yeah, so this is a remnant of the subdivision that. You know, unfortunately, unfortunately, anyone look at it. Required that curbing, so the portion of is, is out where of Shire Drive is, which will become the public portion of, or where the turnaround is.
That being said, I'd, I'd like to suggest making a modification to change all of the sloped granite to monolithic berm, not Cape Cod berm, monolithic berm. And, uh, from what this gentleman says, it sounds like $20,000 would fully cover everything.
20 or 25?
I'd say 20.
Okay.
I'm in agreement.
Okay, sounds like we have a path forward, any comments, anyone on Zoom, or?
Can I just get a understanding of what monolithic berm versus something like Cape Cod berm?
Cape Cod berm, uh.
It's rounded.
Gary, you put the finished coat on, and then you put a hump on the top of it. So once the plow goes down, it just slices it up. Monolithic berm has a smaller angle, it's like two degrees, and it's put down as part of the finished coat, so it's all as one, so it's not apt to be dug up by plows.
Yeah, okay, okay.
That's what we allow that with the town, we have, we don't allow Cape Cod berm, we allow monolithic berm now. And that's the reason, because it'll just, the Cape Cod just slices up.
Yeah, if you look at the, the row work DPW's done more recently, you'll see the monolithic berm on it.
Yeah, it's a much nicer job.
So it sounds like we have a path forward. Um, any additional comments? Nope, okay, so. We would be looking for a motion to place a $25,000 bond subject to the completion and recommending.
20,000.
20,000, that's right, sorry, $20,000 bond. And recommending a temporary, recommending to the building commissioner a temporary occupancy for 17 Shire Drive.
Until June.
Until June.
June 1st.
June 1st, 2023.
And along with a modification to change the sloped granite to monolithic berm.
And along with the modification to change the sloped granite to monolithic berm.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Diamond?
Aye.
Mr. Waddleton?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chris Monfort votes aye, and Ms. Mayo?
I would vote aye as well.
Thank you, all right, so that closes out 17.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now we are entertaining 19 Shire Drive. How's it going?
How are you?
Doing well, please take a mic and introduce yourselves.
Dennis Brolin, owner.
Thank you.
Ted Connolly on behalf of Dennis Brolin.
Awesome, thank you. And so Rich, what do we got here?
Similar in some regards, but a little bit more work to be done towards completion. But looking for the same for temporary occupancy permit. We've had discussions back and forth, I won't, I'll look. You, the Florida Attorney Connolly, kind of described the, the path forward.
Great, you will. Dennis is new to the town, but has been renting for numbered almost 20 years working. What he does is sports fields, Fenway, Tulets, Carlos. So it'll be a great addition to Norfolk going forward. What has happened is he's put up in a very nice building, and there's no problems with the building, but there are issues that have, I mean, part of the problem was his architect passed away, and so there's been a lot of back and forth, but the building's been done, bought the property in 2019. Wants to stay in the building on a temporary permit, and we were handed the punch lists from Beta today. And it's a little more extensive than we expected it to be. But not, this is a 10-acre plot of land, which the one thing you should know about Dennis is it's going to be done to perfection, I mean, that's, you see Fenway field, that's his work, that's things like that, so. There's a lot of soil and rocks, and everything has to be moved, and it will be moved. But he wants to be, make sure he's in the building. And so our proposal is, because the list is a little longer than we expected, is to work out a schedule with the town moving forward. And come back on, get the temporary today, maybe have a temporary permit to the end of April or May. But come back in a few weeks with the schedule of how, of the timing of what will be done on this punch list, punch list, so that the property can get the final occupancy. So we'd like to come back, get the temporary now, come back on the 11th, and update the board where we are and how we move forward.
So it's a little bit flip-flopped. Not only we give you the date that it's due, and then you do it within that date, but to work around that, we could give you a date of June 30th to finish it, and you could come back with a schedule of, of, uh, the work to be done, and the board could vote to.
Extend it.
Extend it. But a bigger question I have is the detention basin.
Yes.
Is that yours?
Correct, is it one that was existing from prior?
So that is part of, so this subdivision has drainage you tie into.
Correct.
Is that basin part of the subdivision drainage system?
It is correct.
Because that's not working right. You're kind of standing water in an infiltration basin.
Well, based on the Saudi, the studies, that, that soil out there is not going to infiltrate, it's not a Class A soil.
That's my point, that's my point. So basically, there's a problem with the infrastructure, either you've got ledge under there or, or non-permeable soil.
Correct.
But you cannot have a basin with standing water. It's a health hazard, it's a danger, it's got to be corrected. And the reason I asked you was on, it was part of your project, so I guess the association must have an easement on your property to fix it and maintain that basin, that's what I'm getting.
There's existing one as well that was existing, obviously, that, that floods as well. But this was designed as a raised basin, so when this surcharges, it goes into that secondary one, and then into the, the stream.
But the secondary one's not infiltrated.
I don't know how that was designed.
But that's what, that's the basin that's filling up with water.
It's a holding basin.
Yeah.
It's not an infiltration basin. So how do we correct something that was designed to do exactly what it was designed to do?
Well, I go back to the planner, because this subdivision is owned by all the individual owners. One of which is the town. Because the police station's there. So either that basin was designed and it was built in the water table, which means that when there's a high water table, it will never infiltrate, or you've got ledge underneath there, or some type of clay where it's not infiltrated.
Well, it was dry three weeks ago before that heavy rain, and I'm sure in another couple of weeks it'll be dry.
So what's happening probably is the water table goes down, and then it infiltrates. By law, it's supposed to hold water for no more than 48 hours.
I just don't understand how it was designed in the first place, only because the rest of the subdivision, they don't have storm scepters, it goes into the drain and directly into stream. I have a bunch of redundancy, so it goes into the storm scepters, I have five on my property, which also go into a major storm scepter, and then goes into the pond, and then it has a raised basin for overflow into the existing, and then into the pond, so. I didn't design this, I thought it was crazy designed, but.
The good news is it's not your problem.
Yeah.
I turned to our planner, but we're going to have to have the DPW look at that.
So what proposed do we do, unfortunately, the timing didn't work where his engineer was available to come tonight to, to go through it, so he's, he's away on vacation, so. Where I think Attorney Connolly was talking about is that I would recommendations, we put this on for the April 11th, so we could kind of explain a little bit further.
Yeah, we need to look at the design and see what was done. My guess is, knowing the man that built that subdivision that ended up going bankrupt, uh, they probably did no, uh, deep hole test on that basin to see what the infiltration was, or where the water table is.
We did a deep hole, and that was the area, we did about, I think, eight locations, and that was the best infiltrating area. And so they did test borings, and they decided that where, that's where it was going to go.
Who's they?
Jimmy Susi, I believe it was through Beta, that did the soil testing. So it was designed by.
So Goodroll and United Consultants did the design?
Correct.
I know, Rick, we can find out from him.
Okay.
Why that water's not.
Also, one other reason, I, it's a 10-acre, 10-acre apostle.
Yeah.
We have eight acres exposed, the rest of it's going to stay trees for now, two acres. And so that whole site goes to that one retention pond, because we haven't put the rain garden in yet. Rain garden is meant to infiltrate, also slow down the process before it goes into that basin. Right now, we don't have that, so you're talking about six acres going to that one basin, which also captured the impervious.
So maybe we're dealing with a drainage system that's partly complete.
Correct.
So maybe the new gardens will help alleviate the problem, but we can talk to United and get the information.
Yeah, Rick will know everything.
Yeah, I'm sure he knew what he was doing when he designed it, so.
It was Jimmy, but Rick also knows what.
Yes, I understand, so yes, we can, but again, it's not your issue, so that's fine.
Okay, good.
Again, similar to the first one, the reason why we put it on tonight was because trying to square up the issue of the occupancy permit, that's sort of creating a partial pathway to completion, I guess, right, so. So-
So, it looks like we also have a similar thing with regards to Cape Cod berm being installed versus the slope granite curb. I think, you know, since we've already made that.
And that is a monolithic berm, not a Cape Cod. So, John, you're absolutely right, in the same reason I did that. I did do slope curbing at the beginning, but I also cemented and made like a sidewalk, so it's, it's protected.
Yeah, well, it's your property, you want it not to be destroyed.
And then, uh, the, the straight up curbing is where it was in front of the building where it was, around the building where there could be a concern about a car veering into the building. We put all straight.
That's all fine.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other comments from the board?
Well, basically, we're going to need some type of a bond, just like the last gentleman there, so-
Yeah, and this is a more significant from a financial perspective, I'm assuming.
How much area do you have to pave?
Roughly, the finished paving is probably going to be about 25 to finish.
Twenty-five thousand?
Yeah, 25,000 to finish.
Okay.
And then painting, and then you have fencing that needs to be completed.
Fencing's, uh, I'm going for-
Are you around the dumpster pad?
We have a dumpster pad, we just need to go around the dumpster, the fencing. We have the fencing on the wall and a, a guardrail. We just need to fence around the dumpster.
And I would just add that as the owner, he has a vested interest in making everything right, getting in there sooner.
Hundred percent. Yeah, we're just trying to protect ourselves as the town as well.
Right.
What do you think a fair number for bond is, what's going to take you to complete that?
Thirty thousand?
I, I think 30 is fair.
We have 20,000.
Well, the landscaping's done, the curbing's all done, monolith's in, basically finished.
You got a lot of trees to do?
Well, we planted all the trees.
They're all done?
Except the ones out back. But we kept up the perimeter, we have 40 foot buffer around the hole. And we also, um, we're not, um, there's a, there's a bike path and a walking pedestrian path. We're not getting into that. So, we're, we're going to have to pull back on the arborvitae's a little bit, which they stated right there. But if we put them where they wanted, it would be in the path, um, the walking path for the town people.
Yeah, that cuts, that cuts through the property, but Riddick's is going to make sure that it stays and protects it.
Yes, I do want to, which is subsequent to me, is to make a change to that screening, so that there is a walk. So, on their side of the stone wall, there is, there is a town Norfolk property on the other side of the stone wall, but everybody's walking and biking along, you can see the path on their property right now.
So, is there like a sanctioned path for the town?
It's not an official path, no, people are using it. As we talked about in the field, when we get to that point, that would be on the town of Norfolk's property, not on the, on their property.
It's very active, so what my concern is, if I take that away, they're going to find another path. And I'd rather them be there, to be honest with you. And we can separate that with a natural buffer, arborvitae's or pine trees or something, so they can have their area. I, I have no need for that area anyways, so, I mean, they're welcome to it.
I'm just concerned from like an insurance perspective, somebody taking a trip and fall on your property is different than someone doing that.
I thought the same thing, but like I said, it's, it's to the point where they're going to find a way around. Because they can't go around the other way because of the stone wall until you guys put a path in on the other side of the stone wall. I'm kind of stuck.
So, do we think that stone wall pathway is going to be sufficient to keep people from utilizing the pathway as it exists today?
So, he's allowing them to do that, so we're not sanctioning that right now.
Okay.
So, this is a, we will, I don't know, I'm sure when this will happen, so, but-
Is this part of the Greenway effort?
It's, it's another, it's a, it's a connection to the Greenway? Yeah, so it's not the prime-
Right.
Primary connection to it, but this pathway, that trail would actually get to Pond Street. So, it would, so we get down to, to Pond Street to then connect over to the Pond Street Recreation area.
Hopefully, hopefully, we can relocate it someday when that goes into effect. But as of right now, I'm just concerned that they're going to take a different road. And it's going to be further on my property, which is going to be an issue.
Oh, it's heavily used, right?
Heavily used, bikers, walkers, dogs.
Okay.
I would, I would think the 30,000 would be fine to cover all this, especially the trees.
Did I hear correctly, you came prepared for 20 already?
Yeah, I came for 20, yeah.
Okay, would an additional 10 be okay?
It's not going to be an issue.
Okay.
Obviously, I can't hand it to you today, but I can get to you first thing tomorrow.
You're going to be 15.
You know better. All right, so if there's no additional comments, I'm willing to entertain a motion to accept a $30,000 bond on 19 Shire Drive with a recommendation to provide a temporary occupancy permit, um, expiring on June 30th?
Yeah, June 30th. And you'll report back on them, the first meeting in April.
With the understanding that we'll see you back on April 11th, at what time?
We'll get back to him on that one.
Okay, we'll get back to you in scheduling the time, um, so I would love that motion.
So moved.
Second? All right, roll call vote. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Diamond?
Aye.
Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye, and Ms. Mail?
I would vote aye as well.
All right, unanimous, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Welcome to the town.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we got meeting minutes, review and approve.
Uh, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February 13th and, uh, March 14th.
Separate.
Okay, just for, uh, February 13th.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Diamond?
Aye.
Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Mottford votes aye, thank you. Next one.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for, uh, March 14th.
And, uh, this one, I believe, John, you were at?
I was out.
You were out, okay, so-
You were not here.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Uh, so, Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Diamond?
Aye.
Mr. Mottford votes aye, it's unanimous. And Mr. Weddleton will upstand, thank you. All right, town planner updates, master plan, what do we got?
April 25th, 7:00 PM, Freeman Kennedy Cafeteria, be the first public workshop. We have, you'll have the master plan, next master plan steering committee meeting will be April 11th.
Will this be with NCTV there as well to record for the town?
Yes, yep. Trying to think what else to tell you. Oh, the select board did vote at the last meeting to designate Select Board Member Kevin Calcutt as their designee. The, uh, nobody's jumping to the front of the pack with the Conservation Commission, so, uh, stay tuned, maybe, maybe you'll get, maybe you'll get one. Of course, they're going to be working on the open space and recreation plan, so they've got their, their plate full too. So, you, you perhaps might not have one, but anyway.
Understood.
Yeah. Yeah, so, April 25th, next meeting, spread the word, get the word, it's been getting out there. So, just so you know, we don't have a Twitter account, we don't have Instagram with the town.
Oh, it's the Twitter, Facebook gram?
Yeah, we don't have any of that. We do have Facebook, so it's been pushed out there, we'll do some more, um, spread the word. So, that, that's important. Hopefully, everybody can come. I've been telling people, they've been telling me different things, I said, well, make your voices heard at that meeting. You know, that's, that's, that's the time.
That's what it's for.
Unfortunately, I will be out of town, but I look forward to seeing the recording and, uh, hearing all about it.
All right, excellent, there'll be many more to come. Housing choice, I don't have, uh, much to report in terms of this evening. But I will have probably a little bit more to report to you at the April 11th meeting.
All right.
Now, the next item on the agenda, I do have a little bit more to report, which I think hopefully is good news to many people. Um, we submitted a request to fund the wastewater treatment plant and the whole system for Norfolk Center, uh, through Congressman Oshenklash. I think I pronounced his name right, hopefully I didn't butcher it too bad. It's one of my Achilles' heels, but anyway. So, he had requested projects that, all the different communities within his congressional district will look to, uh, would like to see move forward. We had a few projects that were submitted, um, but the, the wastewater project was one that he supports in terms of what his goals are and, as a congressman. So, we put together a package, we submitted it to his office, and he has submitted it as part of a congressional earmark, um, for the whole project. So, in terms of the whole project, it was a $6 million request that went in. It does require a 20% component from the town. But as you know, we've discussed all along that there's a betterment component to it. Um, so, that was real positive news, I thought. So, that's, we're in, we're in, in terms of, uh, as a recommended project. So, that's a-
That's great news.
Yeah.
When do we hear back?
So, it's, it's a long road ahead, but I think we would probably hear within this year. So, within this calendar year, we'll have, as it goes along.
Would that 20% be the amount that they denied for engineering?
Yeah, so the engine, so we include that in, in there, so-
And we would have to pay for that.
Pay for it otherwise, so. If you remember, the, in terms of what, you know, the engineering estimate was 4.7 million, all the way up to seven, so it kind of went in the middle, went with for six, but, but, uh, and then in addition, I should say, the Conservation Commission approved a notice of intent to go out into the wetland on the back of the conservation property to put in, uh, monitoring wells to, um, get seasonal ground, high groundwater elevations, as well as putting in the stream back further, um, to complete the model. So, uh, once that gets done, we'll have a better idea of total potential discharge field that we can, so we're another step forward.
Can identify our max sizing.
Maximum sizing, correct, yep.
Uh, when's our next update to the town on this process?
I, I think we probably would want to, I think May might not be a bad time, somewhere in there. Um, because I'll get back in touch with the engineers, I want to, what I want to do is, because they're going to be collecting the data over the month of April. So, maybe we have something, maybe the latter part of May. So, that way, we know, when we have a presentation, we get a sizing and say, you know, here's what potentially could size the system at.
And would we have a better location for the treatment plant by that point as well?
That's what we'll have to get working on too, as you know.
When was he going to submit the bill?
What's that?
When was he going to submit the, the, uh, the bill for funding?
It's in now, it, it was submitted.
Oh, so, when is it going to be voted on?
So, it's for the congressional, I'm trying to think what she is, let me just look real quick at the email, I can tell you what, uh-
The only point was you're going to have to hustle on the, uh, finding a field, huh?
I wish I, I wish that was the case. So, she's, she, so Dana Hanton was his, his advisor, let me just check. No, we have time, because she says it's a long road ahead. I said, well, we've been on a long road already, so, um, let me just check and see what she told me in terms of, uh, I think we get initial kind of passover in the next month, I think it is, or let me, uh-
Goes to committees before it goes-
Yeah, it goes to committee, yeah, so there's a whole, the big process down there in Washington. So, um, she's, so the prior year earmarks that were submitted, the towns didn't hear towards the end of the year, that same calendar year, so in the fall, late winter. So, I would, she anticipated that we, I think a fair would be the fall. You know, I would say the fall, December timeframe. And then, then after that, we can move forward, so.
I mean, ideally, I'd like to go with the town, to the town with as complete of a picture as possible, which would include the size of the drainage field, location proposal, as well as the, uh, location of where we're thinking the plant will go. Because knowing what we know now about the fire station project, we know it's not going there. And I don't want to have to deal with that question in, in a public forum like that, without a, a, an anticipated proposal.
Yeah. Let me see, no, those are all valid points, let me see.
So, hopefully May, but there's a couple of things that we need to get in line first.
Uh, you know, we could, so, yeah, so we have a choice. We either, if we don't have a solid answer on that, we can delay it in terms of going. We just continue with, uh, let me see.
We're probably not going to get funded from the selection list of grants approved, right?
Yes.
Because they were denied, so.
Right.
Yeah, so we're-
We're hinging on that.
Yeah, let's see, it's still sorted through my email here, but-
We got appropriated 15 years ago, $6 million to clean up Southwood, which at the time would have cleaned everything up totally. And it went through appropriations and it was approved. The governor never, uh-
Signed it.
Signed it.
Yeah, so as I mentioned to you-
Lived there for the whole year, being all approved, then I forget which governor it was.
Just needed somebody to sign a piece of paper.
Yeah, the whole politics, yeah.
So, Dana Hanton is the district director for the congressman, and so, yeah, as I mentioned, so I'm just reading her email, so. So, last year was, the town's in here till December. So, I would say we wouldn't know till December. So, we will, you know, in the meantime, work on the plant location.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that. I mean, we still have money, uh, towards this process from a planning perspective.
Yeah, well, we're coming towards the end.
It's the end of H1, right? We've got one more quarter of funding left.
We have, um, we're actually going to be the end in June.
In June, yeah.
Of the year, the first earm, you know, earmark that we got from this, from the, from the, from the state.
Right.
So, let me get, let me regroup once we get that information from the hydrogeologist with the engineer and look at, uh, locations.
Okay, yeah. Before we jump to Southwood, um, for the master plan budget, we don't need to make an ask this cycle at town?
No, we did, you did.
Did, okay.
Yeah, so that-
Taken care of.
Yeah, I went, so I talked about that with the advisory board last Wednesday night.
Okay, good.
So.
All right, Southwood.
So, Southwood, um, we'll have to, so the next step would be, have a community meeting on, uh, on those development scenarios. So, we have the master plan meeting April 25th. Town meeting is May 17th. And I want you to think about, we're not ready to have the public meeting, but think, kind of identify it, maybe a date, then we'll work back, you know. We got a lot of things going on, so I don't want to like-
No, yeah, and that's fair. To be honest, I wish Josh was on, because, uh, it'd be nice to know from a preparedness perspective, when he thinks we should have that next one.
Let me ask him.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me ask, they'll get back to you. I'll email you back in terms of-
The good news is, we're going to meet again in two weeks.
Right.
We can get the answer then.
Well, you'll see him in two weeks, yeah. So, I think that's, if we can't get an answer before two weeks, I think we'll just add-
He's good, you'll get something.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I understand.
Anything else?
Oh, so the, they did pass the supplemental budget bill, which included the extension of remote meetings till March of 2025.
Awesome.
Wow.
Got you covered, Gary.
Yeah.
Thank you, so I can stay on the board, this is great news. I'll be walking again by June, don't worry.
So, now it just has to go back to the governor, but she's, she's the one that proposed extension to start, assuming it's just going to get signed, so. A week before, well, yeah, a week and a few days before it was going to expire. No, I'm sorry, what am I saying, that's wrong, it was going to expire this Friday. So, in the nick of time, so to speak.
Hasn't been signed yet.
Huh?
Hasn't been signed yet.
Hasn't been signed yet, but I don't, I'm, I'm fairly confident that the governor's going to sign it, because there's a lot of constituents that would be very, including, I know, Mr. Sullivan and others that don't want to see it go away. I think it's been a huge benefit to everyone.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, then we've got our meeting schedule, any unanticipated new business?
Um, no, but quick question for the printouts that we're going to have and the information that we'll have on the website, um, about the warrant and the information that's, um, that's in the articles. Will we, should I have the presentation ready for backup as well? So that people can see what a protruding sign means? And, you know, are we going to use that as backup or is that actually going to be a presentation at the town meeting?
It's definitely going to be a presentation.
Okay. Okay, so we might not need the printout then.
I think that's fair, I mean, it'd be good to-
Who's going to do the presentation?
Rich.
No, no.
No, Chad's talking to it, I think.
Chad, okay, cool.
Yep. Well, I think it, so at that point, you'll be converted out, converted over to a, you know, I know you're, thank you for your time serving on the board, is no longer going to be on the board, I know you're on the ballot and nobody's running against you, so that could be your nice welcoming, you can, you're going to, I would defer to you to make the presentation on the sign, in terms of town meeting.
Yeah, whatever Chad wants.
I think-
That's a very elaborate way of cropping out.
I love it, I love it. Make sure that shows that.
All right, whatever, sure, sure. I'm presuming that Chad was kind of teeing himself up to do the use table stuff, so, but we could work on logistics.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
We can, we can put the, but having the presentation, we could put that on the-
I think it makes sense.
On the website, yeah.
Yeah, definitely on the website, I think it makes sense for us to introduce it during